I'd like to call to order the March fourth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting of the Chino Valley Planning and Zoning Commission. Commissioner Zamudio, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, sir.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, folks, I'm gonna break a little bit of a tradition we have here where normally we would say a prayer before the meeting, but seeing as how everybody's got a nice seat, I didn't want everybody to lose their good seat. We're gonna take a minute and I'm gonna say a blessing over this meeting. Yes, hats off, please. Dear Lord, we thank you so much for this opportunity to serve the town of Chino Valley. We ask that you give this commission wisdom and discernment to make good decisions and recommendations to the town council. We ask that you bless our efforts there this evening and that we all conduct ourselves as grownups and American citizens. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Alright. We have a full commission tonight, so we have a quorum. I would like to move, oh, one more thing. Please silence your personal communication device commonly known as a cellphone. I'd like to move forward to item C, which is the consent calendar, which tonight basically consists of approving last minute, last meetings, very brief minutes. Do anybody on the commission have any issue with that? I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Second.
We have multiple seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move to item D one, which is CUP twenty twenty four dash zero five. This is a request by Olson Events in parentheses, Mr. Mike Olson, for the approval of a conditional use permit to allow for the continued use of an existing rodeo and additional outdoor recreational arena activities located on property at thirty-four, three forty-four South State Route eighty-nine in Chino Valley. Has anybody in the commission spoken to anybody outside of this meeting about this item?
No.
Okay, well, I did, I talked.
Comments with the, with staff.
Thank you, Gary. Same thing with me. I have town, talked with the town staff about this meeting. Okay, Will, you're up.
Alrighty. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of Commission. Will Denji, your Assistant Director here with Development Services. As read, tonight's item is a requested conditional use permit for Olson's event, rodeo and event arena that began operation in twenty seventeen. The CUP essentially consists of two parts. The first is staff cleaning up previous actions from previous town staff by establishing the rodeo and event arena as a conforming use on the property. And the second is expansion of this, of their uses to include things like community gatherings, weddings, dog shows, adoption events, and competitions, along with branching into limited motorsports known, and in this case, as dirt bike barrel races. The CUP has been one of the more involved that staff has had, in the sense that staff has conducted multiple site visits, data collection, verification of data provided by Olsons in regards to their lighting and sound studies, and providing the property owners with suggested mitigations based on those studies, similar to that of the Equine Rescue CUP that went before the commission a few years ago. The property as a whole consists of approximately twelve acres and holds two different zoning districts. The first being commercial light, which extends the first three hundred feet of the property to roughly where Olson's grain feed is. And then the remainder of the property is zoned agricultural residential, five acre minimum, or AR five. Within the AR five district, under, listed under conditional uses, it allows for rodeo, livestock auctions, fairgrounds, riding academy, and recreation facilities. Additionally, AR five allows by right, private arenas, which the only difference between the private and public arena is the allowance of the general public to that, which ultimately increases the number of events and the number of people on site. In the surrounding areas, this property, or of this property to the north is the Cooper Ag Center owned by Chino Valley Unified School District. To the east is Olson's corporate office. Additionally, there are two other vacant commercial light parcels. The one, or, excuse me, the one south of Olson's corporate office is the Fairwoods Common, RV and mini storage with a highway frontage commercial strip. You may remember that that conditional use permit came before the commission in twenty twenty-two. Still vacant, haven't heard anything on them lately. They do have a time limit, so that will be coming back before the commission again if they do not break ground. And then to the southeast, or on the northwest corner of South State Route eighty-nine and West Road one south, is a vacant piece of land owned by Ada Zine Home Center. That last discussions were that they were looking at a potential future location on this corner. Directly south of the subject property is an agriculture residential five acre piece of property with a single-family residence located on the eastern property line. To the west is, are two parcels that are owned by Olsons. One is an overflow arena, and the other is Olson's, a home owned by the Olsons family. And then again, a little bit further east is the Triple Three Farm and Events Parcel. It does have a single-family residence, but it also has a conditional use permit that was approved back in two thousand and two under ordinance four eighty-seven that allows for rodeo and events similar to what Olsons is requesting tonight. One item to know, of note with the Triple Three Farms CUP is that they have provisions for lighting and PA systems. However, the only condition on their CUP is the hours of operation, which is in between eight AM and midnight. So as mentioned in the introduction, there has been a pretty extensive history of Olson's Arena and prior steps taken by previous town staff that are no longer here. So the best way to address this and kind of get everybody on the same page is to present a history of Olsons. So they established back in twenty seventeen without a CUP. And this was, at that time, that there was a director in the position that did not require this. In twenty eighteen, town council approved a CUP for the sign for Olsons that is located on State Route eighty-nine. It is an electronic message board sign. And its intent was to advertise Olsons Events products and sales along with community-sponsored events of the arena such as Equafest. This was approved by town council in twenty eighteen. In twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we have a new director during this time. Olsons constructs a new corporate office. This is when the dialogue first started regarding arena lighting and the proposal. At the time, the director viewed the Olsons Arena as an established use and did not require a conditional use permit at that time and allowed, or promised Olsons that they would be able to proceed with their lighting just under the permit, with a permit. In early twenty twenty-two, Olson submitted a pre-application meeting for a new warehouse. While this did not come to fruition, again, it was asked about clarity on the lighting permit and staff upheld the promise given by the previous director. In late twenty twenty-two, Olson submitted for a pre-application meeting for the arena lighting, again confirming the path forward as just as a building permit. Early twenty twenty-three, Olson submitted for the arena lighting permit, which was completed in March of twenty-three in accordance with town code. Summer of twenty-three, we received our first complaint about Olson's Arena. And then in twenty twenty-four, Olson's approaches town on event expansion. Staff determined that at this point, a CUP is needed. Now, the conditional use permit itself, as I previously mentioned, has two parts. It's establishing the arena as a conforming use and allows Olsons to offer additional events. On the left-hand side of your screen is the applicant's provided site plan. Starting with the access, there are two points of access shown on this plan, both of them coming off West Road one south. It is important to note that will be no direct access through Olson's Grain, existing State Route eighty-nine driveway. This is a stipulation of ADOT. I'll get into the secondary access a bit later in the presentation, but this access point is going to be solely result, or reserved solely for EMS and fire, not for the general public. Additionally, within this site plan, you have the main arena here, known as Main Arena One. On the east and west, you have the arena lightings, six total poles. Additionally, you have two sections of covered seating, the office, concessions, ADA compliant restrooms, your parking lot, which is, the parking lot and the arena are, the dust mitigation measures are provided through an onsite water truck that Olsons owns. And then finally, arena number two, which is considered an overflow area where events are not held. On the right-hand side of the screen, it shows the event stats from the calendar year of twenty twenty-four that Olsons had, a total of sixty-nine total events. Twenty-nine events were in the evening or nights, essentially meaning they deployed the use of their lights. Most events held in, were held in between April and October. One to two events per week on average. Each events had a participant of between a hundred and a hundred and fifty, and then fifty to a hundred spectators per event. Currently, the uses, roughly all of them onsite were, are being offered as barrel racing, mounted shooting, team roping, pole bending, pageants, clinics and trainings, and gym cannes. What has been proposed by Olsons is they want to expand into the dirt bike barrel race section, which is essentially taking a barrel race with a horse and replacing the horse with a dirt bike. I'll let the applicant kind of talk a little bit more about the logistics of that. They want to go into weddings, pet adoptions, dog competitions, and community events such as farmers markets, or tractor shows, or auto shows. Now, the neighborhood meeting and public participation. All properties were notified within a thousand-foot radius of the subject property of the neighborhood meeting that was held, or advertised for January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, along with tonight's meeting and the following council meeting. This notification resulted in sixty-three property owners receiving post, excuse me, a postcard through US Postal Service. Twelve people were in attendance representing seven properties. Responses from neighbors within a hundred feet, what that Development Services received was one in opposition, identified in blue on the map here. One originally in opposition, but her concerns were addressed here in yellow. And then five in support, here in the green at the, or the southern portion of the screen. Points of concern from the neighbor in opposition were hours of operation, frequency of events, noise levels, lighting glare trespass, traffic circulation, which is ingress and egress. Additionally, within your packet, you received a petition of support and letters of support from community members outside of the thousand-foot radius here. So getting into one of the first major concerns, traffic mitigation. The opposing neighbor is concerned about the volume of event traffic, potential congestion, and vehicle noise impacting their property, particularly from guests entering and exiting the arena using the eastern driveway, excuse me, next to their home. So based on this comment, mitigation's measures present, or done by Olson's Arena is to address this about near, or, excuse me, about traffic near the opposing neighbor's residence. Olson's has committed to restricting the use of the eastern access point. While this entrance remains a legal access point for not only Olsons, but also Fairwood Commons Parcel and Ada Zine's property, it will be designated for emergency access only during those events. Sinage will be installed and to discourage patrons from using this entrance, and all event-related traffic will be directed to the primary entrance along Road one south, near Mr. Olson's home instead. Noise mitigation here. The opposing neighbor has expressed frustration that the noise level from the event arena, particularly from the PA system, disrupts their peace and made it difficult for them to enjoy their home. She believes that event noise is excessive and intrusive. As part of Olson's submitted, it included a study conducted by Olsons and the noise impact on their neighbors. This was yet done using a decibel meter and taking two different sound measurements. One with their PA plant, or playing music, and the second one with the PA using voice at nine different locations throughout the property. When staff reviewed, excuse me, when staff reviewed this, it was relayed to Olsons that these readings were high and that they needed to come down. So Olsons implemented an upgrade to their existing PA system, which included additional speakers allowing for better sound distribution at lower volumes, rather than relying on fewer speakers at higher volumes. The previous PA system produced noise levels ranging between sixty-six and seventy decibels. The noise study conducted on February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five confirmed that a reduction in noise level with this implemented upgraded PA system, excuse me, resulted in a decrease in decibels at the southern, well, throughout the property, but also the southern property line from a decrease of seventy decibels down to fifty, equivalent to the decrease of a noise level of a vacuum cleaner to that of a conversation. Additionally, the eastern property line of both Olson's Events and the opposing neighbor that faces State Route eighty-nine, the average noise level produced by State Route eighty-nine through cars traveling was recorded at sixty-four decibels. Staff has verified Olson's, excuse me, staff has verified Olson's mitigation measures and confirmed that the new data is accurate. Lighting, now this one has been a big one. The opposing neighbor has stated that bright air arena lighting at nights creates excessive glare and trespass onto their property, disrupting their ability to enjoy their home and property in the evenings. Pictures were provided by the neighbor as per seen on the left-hand side of your screen. It's important to note that light trespass and light glare are commonly blended, but the definition of light trespass is light that falls across property line resulting in a shadow, not glare from a fixture. When this concern was brought up to town staff, this part of the conditional use permit, we forwarded these photos on to the Olsons and said that they needed to reduce the impact that was being presented to the neighboring property owner. While the arena lights are already in compliant with town, the town's outdoor lighting requirements, Olson went ahead and adjusted the tilt of all six arena lights by roughly fifteen degrees to provide a more concentrated light and significantly reduce glare. Furthermore, the western fixtures, specifically the one that were most, were causing the most glare for the property owner, were specifically angled away from the opposing neighbor's residence to further minimize any perceived impact. A site visit by staff on February tenth, twenty twenty-five confirmed that there were no light trespass on the western, excuse me, of the western lights at the opposing neighbor's property line. As you can see from here on this screen, this was the before angles of the lights. Post mitigation, the western lights have been angled down substantially. So with that, before we get into the conditions here, just wanted to read over them. Number one and number two are boilerplate conditions that we have attached to pretty much any action that comes before you. So reading through these, number three, the owner shall limit up to ninety events per to, or total per calendar year, resets on January first of each year. Each day constitutes a separate event. The owner shall ensure that no more than forty of the ninety events are night events. The owner shall limit the number of events held per week to no more than four, with no more than three of those events being nighttime events. Number six, the owner shall ensure noise levels generated by activities at the arena comply with section one thirty-one oh one of town code, not zoning code. Town code is where our noise ordinance is. As amended, and shall be limited to no more than sixty decibels at the southern property line. Intermittent noise events such as, but not limiting to, mounted shooting exhibitions, and dirt bike barrel races shall be permitted only during daylight hours. The owner shall continue to implement reasonable mitigation measures such as scheduling considerations and sound dampening efforts to minimize disruption to adjacent properties. The owner, number seven, the owner shall ensure all lights be turned off within one hour of conclusion of events. With the exception of security lighting, the owner shall continue to implement reasonable mitigation measures in accordance with section four point two four, outdoor lighting of the unified development ordinance. The owner shall prohibit vehicular access to the event arena via State Route eighty-nine. That's ADOT's requirement. Number nine, the owner shall continue to provide adequate off-street parking to accommodate all expected visitors with no overflow parking permitted on public roads. Ten, the owner shall prohibit vehicular access using the eastern easement along the boundary of parcel three oh six two nine zero three zero E. For event, or arena events, this access shall be reserved only for emergency access. And number eleven, the owner shall continue, mitigate, to continue mitigating dust, the impact resulting in the arena and event activities. So with that, staff does forward a recommendation, or, excuse me, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward to the town council a recommendation of approval for a conditional use permit for condition, with the conditions of approval found in attachment A. And I'll go ahead and open it up for questions or discussion from the commission.
Anybody have questions for Will while he's up there?
No.
Good presentation.
Thank you.
Yes. Ma'am?
Yep.
The public will get an opportunity to speak in just a minute. This, this is the commission talking to the town staff. That's alright. Anybody here been to zoning meeting before? Raise your hand. Okay, so they can kind of coach you along, but everybody gets a chance to speak. That's just the way we operate here. It's just at a certain time in the meeting. So, these ninety events, are they like three a weekend, or what's the scoop on that?
So, right now, staff's recommendation is that within a week, Saturday to Sunday, or, excuse, Saturday to Sunday, Monday to Sunday, there's no more than four events per week, and no more than three of those four events being, can be held at night. The additional caveat to that is that there is a total bucket essentially of ninety events that they can choose from, from throughout the calendar year, and no more of than forty of those events can be night events throughout the calendar year. That answers your question.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The events at night, is there a, I say, was it midnight before? Was the time limit?
So midnight was the one for Triple Three Farms, their condition. So ours lighting code allows for operation of until eleven PM, or if the event starts before eleven, you can conclude after eleven.
How about for noise?
For noise, it is between the hours of twelve and five, or midnight and five AM. But then within there, there is a stipulation about sound amplification systems. We've talked with the police chief about this. He's the one who enforces the noise ordinance. It just recommends that amplified sound systems cannot be heard at a greater distance of fifty feet unless otherwise approved by the chief of police. We tried to do that through a condition here, condition number six, however, the attorney feels that it needs to be handled through a separate measure. And then in discussions with the chief of police, that measure would be taken if the CUP is approved.
That's my biggest concern is that.
Sure.
Go ahead, yeah.
The, sound of the guns going off, is that also staying under sixty?
No, it would not. No, within stipulation number six here, it talks about intermittent noise, limited amounting shootings, shall be permitted only during daylight hours, but it would exceed that, that sixty decibel.
I have a question. So sometime in the recent past, there were some motorcycle races out by Old Home Manor, and those races were closed down because of public outcry. And so, and that's out there in, in basically nowhereland. I think it's interesting that we're entertaining barrel dirt ride, dirt bike racing, which the staff was kind enough to educate me a little bit on in an area that has more density for people.
So, I mean, it is a requested use to be added to this as part of the events if the commission would like to further restrict that or discuss that further. I know the applicant is here that can kind of maybe educate the whole commission on what a dirt bike barrel race is, what their intention is. The reason why staff entertained it is, it's only one bike going at a time. The idea was that the impact is not a true like motocross freestyle where you're racing, you know, fifteen bikes at a time with a lot of consistent on that. So that's kind of why it was supported from staff's perspective, but happy to just hear your thoughts on that for sure.
Alright. Any other questions? Will, I'm sure we will call you back.
Absolutely.
Okay, so the next part of the meeting is the applicant's presentation. Is the applicant here? Would you like to come up and speak? You are not required to.
I'm Mike Olson, one of the owners of Olson's Grain, and very involved in Olson Events, which is a subsidiary company. It's an LLC that we spun off of Olson's Grain Incorporated that we've been doing business in Chino since nineteen seventy-nine. I really don't have anything to add to what Will presented to you guys. I, I really feel that he said it well and it presented everything that we've discussed, and this simply would answer any questions if you have further clarification you'd like to hear.
Does anybody from the commission have questions for Mr. Olson? Would, I do, obviously.
Alright.
Would you be conducive to not asking for the motorcycle barrel racing if it came down to it?
We feel like there's a real need in the community for this event. We did have a TUP last summer to have one of these motorcycle barrel races. That was approved by staff, and it was, it was a huge success. I mean, it was many, many families, young kids on small fifty cc to hundred cc motorcycles or dirt bikes. And I think the key, as Will said, is that it's one bike that's out there for probably twenty seconds, maybe thirty, and then the next bike goes. So it's strictly one at a time. And, and the way the event works is that a motorcycle rider and a horseback rider enter as a team. And the first thing we do, let's say we're gonna start the event at four o'clock. We will do all the bikes first, and once those times are all posted, then we will go to the horse portion of that, and all the horse riders will post the time, and then the two times are added together and declare the winners that way. So we really want to do this. I mean, we see a huge community need for this. And the parental support and, and the community support to have this is really, really strong. And so, so to answer your question, I would respectfully say we really want to do this. If it means that or nothing, then I guess we gotta talk some more, but I, but I really think that maybe after you hear some of the public comment about this, we would like to proceed to be able to do. And I think we don't even have them scheduled yet, but we'll probably do at the maximum four of them and, and maybe a couple of practice sessions, like the day before the actual event. But it's pretty minimal compared to the grand scheme of things.
Okay, go ahead, mister.
Is there an upper limitation on the size of the motor?
We do not have any of that, no.
Could you put one on?
I, we could look into that. Yeah.
I'm, I'm just saying that the motor is what's gonna make the noise, and so if you limit the size of the motor, you can limit the amount of noise.
Yep.
And I think that might be something that you and staff could work out.
Certainly, we, we'd be willing to do that, yes.
Go ahead.
Will the bikes be stock?
We have no really rules or provisions for that. You're thinking of, you know, souped-up bikes that are just louder? Is that kind of what you're getting at, or?
The exhaust system?
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, so that's another thing. Maybe we, we could put some stipulations on. We, we have not done that in the past, but certainly could look into that and work that out with, with town staff, if you think we should.
From what I saw of the videos that I, town staff showed me, a bigger motor may not be a whole lot of help.
Correct, yeah. That, that's absolutely correct. I mean, I think everybody's probably seen a barrel race, you know, so you gotta go out there and make a circle around three barrels, and, and they don't go very fast.
When you held this, these, you say you've had one or a couple of the barrel races, the motorcycle barrel races?
Cheyenne, we, we had one competition and I think one practice, and we're proposing to have more, yes.
In, in that event, did you receive complaints from anybody around you when that event happened?
Not that I know of, no.
Okay. Alright. Anybody else have any more questions?
Just a quick question from staff. Did staff get any complaints about the noise from the motorcycles?
We'll give them a chance to answer a lot of this stuff.
I have just a quick comment.
I have just a quick comment. How do you advertise your events? Cause I've been here for a while, and I like to see some of these events myself, but I never knew that some of them existed.
Most, mostly social media.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, we have, I'm not the expert on that, Cheyenne is, but, um, you know, we have a, a newsletter we send out to people who have signed up for it. Uh, we do put things on the marquee in front of the feed store quite often. Um, so that's the other way, but, but the marquee and then social media.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, some of the team ropings actually, there's in a, there's a magazine that comes out statewide that we put ads in as well, and that's, but that's just team roping.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? We'll reserve the right to ask you to come back up. Again, you're not required to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So we're gonna move forward to the public portion of the meeting, which I'm assuming is why all you folks showed up. The rules are very simple. You're gonna be polite, you're gonna be concise. Please don't be repetitive. If you come up to support or go against it, I make notes up here of who talks and what their comments are. And if you support somebody, then I would encourage you to say, well, we support the folks that have spoke before us, because pretty quickly everybody's gonna say what needs to be said, and then it's just gonna be repetition. We have a lot of folks here tonight. And so, um, you will be polite. We will not listen to folks come up here and tell us that we're trying to kill mom and throw apple pie in the garbage can. That happened at one of the meetings for the horse manure business, and we are not going to put up with that again. We're up here to listen. We recommend things to the town council, and then it's up to the town council to make the final decision. But I can assure you that we all like mom and apple pie, and yes, I do have some hay on my shirt, cause I fed my horse before I got here. So at that, I'm gonna call your name. You'll come up to the podium. You'll state your name, and then you get three minutes, and that lovely lady right there is gonna be the clock person. And I'm gonna monitor it as well, and when your three minutes are up, I'm gonna ask you to please close and step down. And I am pretty famous for letting everybody get a chance to say what they gotta say. So with that, Mr. James Holt, would you please step up?
Good evening, chairman. Good evening commissioners. My name is Jim Holt, one seven seven one East Perkinsville Road. And I'm here with members of the equine emergency evacuation group. Uh, we're here with John Hughes and Carol Fontana, who originated, uh, uh, the equine emergency evacuation, and also with Russ Whalen, who's our director of development. We're here to speak on behalf of the applicant. I had the, um, very good fortune to know and to work with Mike's dad, John Olson, for nearly two decades before he passed in twenty seventeen. We have known the Olson family and the Olson employees to be honest, trustworthy, and to have a great deal of integrity. And, uh, again, we're, uh, speaking on behalf of the, uh, of the applicant. And like a probably dozens of nonprofit organizations throughout the community, Olson's has been a very good supporter of us. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so the next person up is Kim Hennessy. Please don't be nervous. They don't allow us to shoot anybody. Really? Disappointment, huh? You might pull that microphone down to you too, so that they can hear you on TV land.
There's no sound on this. It's not, it's not, there's no sound. I'm sorry, what, oh, the microphone?
That's alright, yeah.
It's coming over the, uh,
How loud is it? Hello, my name is Kim Hennessy.
Ma'am, you're gonna have to get real close, cause them things don't work that good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright. My name is Kim Hennessy. I'm opposed to this cup or this permit as it currently reads. With less than three minutes, I'll cut to the chase on the biggest issue. This is not loud. But it's loud at my house, so. Alright. So I think you could hear, that's at my house. I don't care how Mike Olson uses his property, as long as it doesn't impact the tranquility of mine, and that's what town ordinances are for. One thirty-one point oh one is clear. Zero decibels at fifty feet. It can't be sugar-coated or glossed over. If the town wishes to change its ordinances, it knows what needs to be done. Approval of this permit would be a serious breach in public trust and would make it very difficult for the police to enforce code going forward. Olson is requesting the town make an exception for regular and reoccurring violation of its own ordinance. This is a tremendous ask that I've not seen the town do for anyone else in all my years here. Permission to violate ordinance four days or three nights a week during the best months of the, of the year. With a pseudo-set parameter, pseudo-set parameters, but if you read carefully, really unlimited parameters with the blessing of development services in that, the plan that they have. Excuse me. If the town moves forward with approving this without a guarantee that zero at fifty will be met, then I am respectfully requesting a one-year vise-five-year review to see how compliance is being met, that their requested event numbers be cut down by two-thirds to thirty days with no more than thirteen of those being at night, that events much, end much sooner with lights off by nine PM, a substantial and effective sound barrier mitigation, that arena lights be shielded per code four point two four, no dirt bike or motorsport events. This shouldn't even be possible in a residential area, and I did complain. And that development services not be granted the power to authorize them any increase in events. It's easy to get lots of signatures for an arena, but nobody would sign up for this spilling in, over property lines and into their homes or your homes.
Could you finish up quickly?
Yes. Disturbing the comfort and repose we all worked so hard for. I'm asking you please to not approve this without further review and mitigation efforts. The impact to my home has been significant, and I just want you to see, this is my house. Right here. It's so close, and he didn't care. They don't care. It's not their homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Just, uh, further ground rules, we're not allowed to comment when things are spoken up there, so just so you're aware, when we sit here being very quiet, that's just the rules we have to follow. Okay, the next person is Ashley Hall.
Hello, sorry, I don't know how to address everyone.
Just state your name, please.
My name is Ashley Hall.
And then have at it.
Okay, um, I moved, uh, back to Chino in twenty nineteen after being out of this community since two thousand and seven. Back in two thousand and seven, there weren't a lot of places for us to go with our horses. There weren't a lot of places for us to enjoy the outdoors and kinda the sport that we worked so hard to do. We had to travel outside of the community. That meant spending our money outside in Phoenix, um, different areas like that. I would much rather be able to stay local and, you know, keep my money local. I have friends that come over from Phoenix, they come from Lake Havasu Flagstaff, and all of them come here, they stay the night, they eat at our restaurants, they shop at our grocery stores, they get gas at our gas stations, and that's a huge, uh, impact to our community. The other part, um, with Olson's events is there are not a lot of places for youth to go in our area. There's a park, yes. There's some, you know, obviously the forest, but I'd much rather see kids coming to Olson's events and coming to the arena where they can be with their family as opposed to out partying out Perkinsville, um, parking in Safeway and hanging out, and I just think that, um, the activities that they're trying to add to Olson's events is a huge positive to our community. I was at the dirt bike barrel race, and I saw firsthand how, um, thorough, and they tried to follow every guideline. They were very courteous, um, and the show, the people that showed up to support that was amazing. We had people from Phoenix. They wanna come back. They are excited. These were little kids. I mean, I saw three-year-olds on little dirt bikes, and they were having the time of their lives. And to offer something like that, you know, is just, um, amazing. I haven't seen a lot of communities do what Olson's events is trying to do, and to be able to have it in our backyard is amazing. So I support them and what they're trying to accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. If I get these names wrong, I'll apologize after you correct me. It's, looks like Taylor Schumake. And I might've got the first name screwed up.
Hello? No, you got it. It's Taylor Schumake. It's just with an E, not a Y. Um, so my name is Taylor Schumake. Um, I am the adoption coordinator for Yavapai Humane Trappers. Um, we do a couple events at Olson's, so we're in support of them. We do a lot of dog adoptions through them. We also did a dog fair as well, which many dog organizations come to. But strictly us. We did have two last year. Um, one resulted in seven adoptions. I adopted one of them. Milo, my little German shepherd puppy. I wouldn't have met him without this, um, event. And I love him dearly, and I'm sure all the other six applicants that adopted would say the same. Um, I know we're not a nighttime kinda group or a morning time kinda group, but if this comes, comes into play, we can't do it at all. And this is one of our main outdoor adoption events. And without that, how do we outreach? We only have social media. Um, we sometimes do Petco, but it's such a small area to have a bunch of people at. And if this is taken away from us, where do we go next? And Olson has been super nice about having us there, having the dogs there. Um, we have such a huge community outreach because of it. Um, and I'm just not sure where would we go. Um, that's kind of where I stand, and I'm sure many of my, um, team members also stand with that. Um, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate everything that you guys do, and I hope you guys have a lovely evening.
Thank you. Melinda Davis.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Melinda Davis. I'm here in support of Olson's from Yavapai Humane Trappers. There's many of us here, only a couple of us chose to speak. So if you're here from Yavapai Humane, either raise your hand or stand up for a second. These events that Olson's is doing, as Taylor stated, we had ten dog adoptions over two events. A lot of people from these communities cannot make it all the way into Prescott to go to Petco to find their forever-loving dog. If you're on the Pauldin pages, the Chino Valley pages, you will see the amount of dogs that Yavapai Humane Trappers rescues. A lot of these dogs might be found by their owners if we can have these events. The barrel racing with the bikes, I think is also a good idea, because being on the Chino Valley pages and the Pauldin pages on Facebook, good lord, the amount of complaints that people are getting from all the little dirt bikes going through their properties and such. So please seriously consider approving Olson's conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Pam Berry.
Good evening. My name is Pam Berry, and I'm here representing Horses with Heart Therapeutic Riding on the South End of Chino. Um, we are here in favor of Mike Olson and the Olson's Event Group. Not only do they support these other fine non-profits that have already spoken this evening, they've been a supporter of us since our beginning in nineteen ninety-three. They have been over backwards to do what they can for the disabled, for the young people, for just about anybody in this community that needs services. As far as the motorcycle event, I'm not a motorcycle person, but I do enjoy going out and watching the barrel racing. But I will tell you, when they hold an event, safety is number one. They are always on the alert for things that are unsafe, and they put a stop to it. The, um, young people with this kind of event have an opportunity to learn something new in a safe situation, instead of out in the forest where they could be hurt and not be, um, having the appropriate transportation if they needed it to health services. So, um, I strongly urge you all to support this, um, use permit for the Olson Event Center.
Thank you. Melissa Ambrose.
Good evening. Thank you guys for your patience listening to all of us. Um, I am here in support of the Olson's events.
Please state your name for the record.
Oh, Melissa Ambrose. I apologize. I'm here in support for Olson's events. Um, I am a mounted shooter, and they have been a huge advocate for us and have been welcoming to us, and we just wanna do anything we can to support them. I don't have a lot to say. If you guys have any questions about mounted shooting, I'm happy to answer them. There's quite a group of us here tonight. We just really appreciate everything Olson's does for us. I also coach a lot of kids that go to the barrel races, barrel races and gymcanas, and Olson's is such a support in the youth of our community in so many different ways, and I think having a son who grew up with nowhere to ride his dirt bike, as a mom, I would have loved to haul him to the barrel races with his little fifty dirt bike and let him tear around the barrels and race his sister on her horse. I think it's a great opportunity to bring other members of the family to an event, and so I really appreciate what Olson's is doing. That's all I have. Thank you.
Greg Patterson. Why don't you just come on up and say that? That way the public that's not here can know that. It's important, cause this is all televised.
I'm Greg Patterson. I've been in this town for sixty-four years, and I've seen a lot of changes, and this is one of them I don't wanna see. I don't want it to go away. I grew up with Ricky Hennessy. His mom, dad, his aunt, Ms. Cooper, would roll over if they knew this was trying to be taken, taken away. And I'm in full support of Mike Olson. That's all I got to say. Thank you, sir.
Okay, so the ones that have been to the zoning meetings before know that applause is a no-no. You got your one applause in, please don't do that anymore. We will never get out of here. Thank you. Missy Nelson or Nielsen, I'm not sure which. Nelson, thank you.
Missy Nelson with Makin Time Ranch. Um, we are sponsors of Olson's events, and we support them in everything they are doing. They are family-friendly, they're safety-oriented, and they bring a lot to the community. Uh, we will continue to support them every year. Uh, that's all. Everybody else said everything perfectly.
Thank you. Just because it was briefed doesn't mean that the note didn't get written down as good as the other ones did. It's important that you guys understand that we listen and then we take the best notes we can, and just cause you said a few words doesn't mean the impact is lessened by it. Okay, Donna Richardson.
Good evening. Uh, Donna Richardson. I'm here to, in support of Yavapai Humane Trappers and all that Olson's has done to help us in this community. But I'm also here as a homeowner- But I'm also here as a homeowner in, uh, for, with a home here in Chino Valley. My son is raising a young family. We sit in his backyard on East Perkinsville Road and cheer on the young kids, uh, at the ball field. We can hear down the road at night playing ball, screaming, yelling, having fun. The lights on at the park with the pool and the playgrounds and all. I, I see a lot of similarities there. What Olson's are trying to do here is provide opportunities for the families in this community. And this has been a very rural community for many, many years and a lot of us don't want to see it change. So I believe that the Olson's have done a great job listening to presentation tonight, making accommodations to meet the needs of the residents that are around that area. But I'm in full support of them continuing these types of events to help our families, help our children, learn about what agriculture is, what owning horses and dirt bike racing and all those events that take place there, um, to help families be part of this community. Earlier someone mentioned about spending the money in the community. If it doesn't happen here, it will happen somewhere else. So why not invite them here to Chino, have the events here? They go to the restaurants, go to Safeway, go to the Maverick or whatever to provide, to buy their goodies. So, why not support that? It's good for the whole community. I believe Olson's will continue to work with the town council to make things right and as best as they can. And I think we should all support our families in the community here. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Helen Fuller.
Good evening. My name is Helen Fuller and I'm the president of the Tri-City Speedsters, which is a Jim Canna group that operates in, we're called the Tri-City Speedsters because we basically are Chino, Prescott, Prescott and Prescott Valley is where all of our, most of our families come from. We have usually eight to ten events per year. Half of them are at Olson's and half of them are at Triple Three. We have between sixty and seventy-five riders and families come to each event. Um, I totally support Olson's. Um, they have been nothing but supportive to us. The kids' safety is number one, but this is a family-oriented event. For us, it's parents and kids that come and watch. I invite you guys to come out and watch these events and see how many families and parents there are. I also participated in the barrel race and dirt bike race. I was expecting it to be way louder than it was and it wasn't. I thoroughly enjoyed it. The, watching the little kids on their dirt bikes was awesome. So, I just want you to know that as president of the Tri-City Speedsters, we support Olson's one hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Amia Saxton. Did I get it right? I just couldn't read the middle of the last name, sorry.
I was rushing because I was a little late when I wrote it. Um, my name is Artemis Saxton. Um, I, um, have been here not as long as some of you have been lucky enough to be here. Um, but one of the reasons I moved here was for Olson's Events. Not, I had a friend up here and our daughters did everything together and one of the things we would come up, we would haul up from Phoenix and we would spend our money here and we would, the memories we have from that time and it was one of the main reasons for moving was the sense of community that it provided. Um, something that I didn't, we did horse events, we did other things in Phoenix and didn't have that same feel as Olson's provided. Um, and I did not attend the barrel race and dirt bike race, but I can tell you as a mom that had a divided sex thing at our house with boys liking bikes and girls liking horses, if I could have had something that would have pulled my kids together, that they could have done together to not be divided and to be more encouraging of each other, I would have loved it.
Thank you. Sean Russell.
Hi, my name is Sean Russell. I don't think I need a mic. You can probably hear me. I'm pretty loud. Um, can everybody in the back hear me okay?
We actually need to on the mic for the, um, the people at home.
Oh, for the people at home. Okay, hopefully I don't blow their drums out. Um, I want to say one thing very quickly. I've been in this town almost three years. But I'm going to share a very quick story with you because this has happened to us before. I've lived through this and I would very strongly encourage you, I'm very passionate about this, to think very, very carefully about letting one person, they have their right, but one person take away the fabric, the heart of this community and our kids. One person. We lived in a community, we moved there that was very much like Chino when our kids were six and eleven. And we had a outfit that was close to what Olson's are that put on every Friday night, put on horse events and different events for the community. And we moved there because of our kids. One person in that community, one, did the same thing and stopped it for everybody. Nothing. It all went away. And when that happened, the community did not have the same feel. It did not have the same, um, values of, I may not know you, Richard Zemudio, but you're my neighbor. And that's what this town is like. People treat each other with respect. I'm not afraid to walk downtown at night. I'm not afraid because I know people here are good and their values are good. And this type of event, a center of our community, that brings something for everybody, not just the equine. I'm an equine, but I grew up riding dirt bikes, okay? As far as noise goes, most horse owners would have had a bigger fit than the homeowner if the noise was going to scare their horses. So, it can't be that bad. But just in short, if you guys, if the town allows one person to take this away from the whole community, I'm telling you, it's a very big mistake. It will change the fabric of this community. It will change the, the, um, goodness that Olson gives to this community for kids to have something clean and constructive to do. And if you live in this town and you don't want the noise, you might as well move because everybody rides side-by-sides, razors, good lord. Coming home from Ash, uh, Ashfork, there was a guy riding a quad down eighty-nine. I mean, they're everywhere. I don't care what street you live on, they're everywhere and it's noisy. So, I would just want to tell you that from experience, this is going to affect the very core of this community and the future of our young people. So please consider very much, I feel bad for the woman, but one person, it's not fair to take away all of that, that Olson, the value Olson brings to this community and keeping us knitted together. And I know Olson's aren't doing it for money because I know what the fees are and the paybacks are. They aren't making any money. And I very much appreciate that and I support them one hundred and fifty percent. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. That was good discipline on your part. You didn't applause.
We wanted to.
I bet. Okay, so that's all the cards I have. Hopefully everybody got to say their piece. It seems to be pretty overwhelming, the community sentiment. Will, would you step up to the mic please? So, you've heard lots of people in support. You've also heard from the homeowner that's the most impacted by the events and there was some things brought up about town ordinances. And I wasn't quick enough to write all of them down, but I'm pretty sure you're familiar with what she was speaking about. There was a noise ordinance that said that there is to be no decibels being able to be heard at the fifty-foot line. Can you explain what that's all about?
Sure. Um, that is, it's our, excuse me. That is our noise ordinance and that's found within the town code. Um, Development Services does not enforce that. That's a police enforcement ordinance. And within there, it does say that amplified sound systems, um, should not be heard or cannot be heard at a greater distance than fifty feet. However, if you read a little further, there is an exemption clause that grants the chief of police the ability to exempt or approve sound systems that can extend past that point. Um, so Commissioner Zemudio brought it up during their first round of questions that, or excuse me, I brought that up as part of an answer to his question. Um, we have discussed this with the chief of police. The hope was that we could wrap that approval within condition number six. Um, however, the attorney, town attorney, felt that it was necessary to do that as a separate action outside of the conditional use permit. So, essentially, if the conditional use permit is granted by town council, ultimately, they would need to essentially petition the chief of police for that exemption within the town code.
Okay, um, then the other one was the lighting code four-point-two-four.
Yes, that is our lovely lighting code. Um, I, you will not ever find that Lori and I really love this code, um, or the whole zoning code as a matter of fact. However, within our four-point-two-four specifically outdoor lighting, um, it actually grants exemptions for recreation facilities to allow for unshielded lights and to not adhere to essentially the shielding and, um, best practices that we commonly refer to as dark sky. Um, even though our ordinance does not mention that. However, current code allows for exemptions for public recreation facilities, arenas, similar to that of the town ballfields, um, and similar uses.
Okay. So, and you can correct me if I'm saying this wrong, but, um, the comments about the town, three nights a week supporting town violation of town code is really, probably not exactly what's going on there.
That would be accurate if the chief of police gives that permission, which-
For the sound, but it sounds like the lighting.
Oh, correct. That is correct too, as well.
Okay. Anybody on the commission have questions?
Well, would you do me a favor? Would you put up the, uh, from the general plan, could you put up a zoning map as to what the, uh, general plan designation is for this area?
Yeah.
Just so everyone sees it. Because I've read it and it appears that the entire area is to be neighborhood commercial and maybe a little neighborhood residential.
That is accurate. Let me, sorry.
I wish I could read that fast.
Too fast. All right, so, if you kind of scroll in here.
So Olson's roughly there. Can you tell what the NR and the NC and all that means, please?
Absolutely. Let me go back.
No, you're on the right page. All right.
We're good here? Yes, so, um-
About not being able to read that fast.
Um, so within the general plan, the designation of NR is neighborhood residential. That is four dwelling units per acre. This category applies to areas that are primarily small town residential neighborhoods. Chino Valley, um, requires a connection, mandatory connection to community water and sewer systems. Let me back up here a little bit. There, we're going into a whole different area than what we've discussed tonight. General plan land use map does not dictate zoning currently. This is if you wanted to rezone your property, this is what the general plan would support. So what I'm reading here is not what these neighbors are, can do right now. It's what they're, is support for in the general plan.
And I think the reason for going down this road is for education.
Sure.
And your explanation of what we were going into is, is good. But the point is trying to be made that there's some things in this neighborhood that could be done that fit in line with what's happening already in the future if somebody went for a zoning change.
Correct. So, within there, within neighborhood residential, it's more of your higher density. Um, it's going to be quarter acre, half acre lots, your mobile home parks, um, public land. And then what, excuse me, Olson's is designated as neighborhood commercial and that allows to load a moderate intense commercial services, primarily serve a market of close to residential neighborhoods. Category includes restaurants, retail stores, outdoor displays, grocery stores, field services, financial services, medical services. Um, and the list kind of goes on within there.
But it's commercial.
Yeah.
Satisfied?
The only thing I would say is that, um, I think the staff should work with Mr. Olson if this conditional use goes forward as to, uh, limiting the motor size and having mufflers on the dirt bikes to mitigate some of the sound. And, um, I think you've addressed the concerns about the sound ordinance adequately, so. And, uh, with the lighting, Mr. Olson has already taken action to try to mitigate that, so.
Have a question. The video that we saw with the lighting, was that done after the changes to the degree of the lighting? The, the video from, uh- At the nighttime that was shown? That was, that was before. That was prior to? Yes. So as it's changed now, with that same angle, how bad is it? So this isn't exactly the same, um, location that the picture was taken. Um, the picture on the left was provided by, um, the neighbor. The picture on the right was taken from Olson's at their property line as close as they could get to the neighbor. There's, there's pretty noticeable difference. There is. I'm still a complaint with that too, with it being the fifteen-degree change. Yeah, yeah.
So, in dealing with the neighbor that is impacted the most, has there been any documentation submitted from that source that refutes any of the lighting and sound testing that was done?
We have not received anything, no.
All right, anybody else? Go ahead.
So if the, uh, cup is passed and the police chief does not allow for, uh, the noise exemption, then Olson's will be required to follow the current noise restrictions?
Correct.
Even though ours is passed, our town council-
That's for amplified sound.
Yeah, for, anything for amplified sound on that. I don't know if we want to, Lori, break that out as like, you know, as a separate condition that it has to, I mean, we've had dialogue with the chief of police and he's in support of granting this exemption. Uh, it just has to be done through a separate process with, outside of the conditional use permit.
So just to clarify, that position was established by the town attorney?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Otherwise you would have included it in this package.
We tried, yes.
Okay, and you did speak to the chief of police who gave his verbal support.
That is correct.
Not an official judgment, but his verbal support.
That is correct, sure.
Okay.
My question was, if he forfeits that verbal, does it also forfeit Olson's from being able to have amplified sound over the time?
Per town code, that would be correct, yes.
Can we, in interest of not redoing this thing all over again, can we put a stipulation in there that says before recommendation goes, that part of the recommendation to town council is a written commitment from the chief of police that he would approve the sound system to help mitigate the opportunity for it to get short-circuited before it goes to town council?
We can make sure that that happens.
So we want to include that wordage?
Yeah, that's part of a condition. Okay.
Think that'd do it? Anybody else? Yes?
I have two questions. First one, what are the hours and the days of the lighting over at the park for the baseball fields?
I could not tell you that off the top of my head. I apologize. Um, it's usually as needed, um, but I, I know they go late into the night as well. We have, um, in talks with Jason Olson, who is our parks and facilities manager. Um, they have had events, especially when they do, um, competitions and whatnot, um, that they go beyond eleven o'clock.
And those lights are to the night sky for aiming so that they don't infringe on Chino Meadows?
Are you asking if they're dark sky compliant or, um, I, I would say they are not.
But they can, are there complaints from Chino Meadows on those? But they can, are there complaints from Chino Meadows on those lights?
You know, I, we haven't received any from code enforcement's end. I, I don't know if the town as a whole has, but my department and my division that I manage code enforcement has not received any.
And my second is the triple three farming events. What are their restrictions on their lights and sound?
So their restrictions that were established in two thousand and two are the only condition addressing their lights and amplified sound is that they have to be within the hours of operation of eight AM to midnight.
So that, is even longer than what Olson's is asking for?
It's, it exceeds what code, current code requirements.
So in part of the staff research on page twenty six, my parliamentarian eagle eye spotted this thing. It says Josh McIntyre, Chief of Police Depart, Chief of Police Police Department, under comments from town staff. And it says he rece, he responded or received a response and the response from him was no conditions, which indicates that he is in support and didn't want to place any limitation on any of it.
Fair point, yes.
Okay, well, that kind of even nails it down even better. Just for reiteration, if, if if one of the neighbors across the street who's in the AR four or five zoning district decided to do the same thing Olson's is doing, only not offer advertised prize money, because everybody that's been to some of these things knows that money gets changed somehow, that they would be allowed by right of the property owner to do pretty much exactly what Olson's is doing now. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thanks. All right. Anybody else have a question?
I have two. Um, in regards to the one event that Elson's did hold involving the dirt bikes, did, were you aware of any complaints that the town police department, code enforcement, or your department received regarding that?
Yes, we did receive, um, one from the neighbor, uh, in opposition that spoke this evening.
And as regards to the larger event outside of town or at the far east end of town, what were the complaints that were generated from that? Was it noise or, or dust?
So a lot of those were done before my time, but my understanding it was both noise and dust from there. Noise travels significantly far here in Chino Valley, especially when you're out at Old Home Manor.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Will.
You're welcome.
Would the applicant like to come up and offer a chance for us to ask a couple of questions? So some of the, well, the two main issues are sound and light. And from appearance, the, the lighting seems to be quite a bit better than it was. When I say better, as far as reflecting and glaring into the neighbor's yard than it was after you remediated, it's quite, looking quite acceptable from the picture that's up on the computer. Would you be amenable if the neighbor chose to participate in communication to changing some of it a little bit if you were invited over to the property to see what the issue was with the neighbor?
Well, only if it does not impact the safety of our participants. So right now, based on the photometric study and consulting with our lighting expert, the angle that is now set to minimize glare and maximize safety in the arena.
Okay, and if, if it became a sticking point, what would you have to do to make it less obtrusive than it is now? What would be the solution for something like that?
Um, I believe we've done everything that can be done with the existing lights. And so we have a significant investment in those lights. Again, as Will pointed out, they were all approved by the town. And so we feel like now because of the adjustments we've made, we have maximized the the angles that best provide for safety and minimize glare. And, and I think we all know that you will never eliminate glare. And in doing, in doing the adjustments to the angle, um, there is no light trespass now. There was, if there was any before, it was minimal, but now there is none. So I, I don't believe that there's anything more we can do with the lights to, to accomplish, which is our number one priority, the safety of our riders.
All right, and then, um, as far as the sound, it sounds, it appears to me to have met pretty much all the town requirements and fifty decibels is a pretty yeah, pretty quiet.
Yeah, so as, as you can imagine, a PA system is vital to our events. I mean, we could not have an event without a PA system. So, you know, we have, you know, a large area where people are working with their horses, waiting around for their turn to compete. And we have to have a way to notify those people when they are expected to compete in the arena. And so the use of the PA system is vital to operating an event, whether it's barrel racing, team roping, or even some of the other, um, things that we'd like to see happen.
How often do the night events go right up to midnight? Is that a pretty common occurrence or is that just in special circumstances?
We, we have always operated with the eleven o'clock cutoff. And, and we have not had an event that has gone past eleven o'clock. We had one incident last year where a horse was injured, so the veterinarian was there and we had the lights on beyond eleven. So, um, to answer your question, we're, we're done before eleven. If we had a huge event that we don't anticipate, that had double the entries that we have had in the past, um, it's conceivable that we would go right up to eleven. But our, but our our procedure would probably mean we'll just start earlier. And, and like has been said many times, the, the little kids are a big deal to us. And it takes a long time to, to get all these little kids in and out of the arena, so we, we would just move it up for those little kids to start earlier if we anticipated a huge turnout for any particular events. And the barrel races are our biggest event. There's no doubt about it. We have a series, a barrel racing series that people participate in all summer and we have a finals, um, at the Prescott Rodeo Grounds that we call Equafest. And so it draws a, a big crowd and, and, uh, like a lot of these ladies have said, I mean, it's, it's, it's a big deal to come here and participate in, in these horse events that we're trying to provide the community. And I, 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 let me just add, this is maybe off the subject, but if, if one of the ladies mentioned, um, spending money in the community, we pay back to the participants seventy percent of what they pay to enter. So we put seventy percent of that money back in their pockets. Now, not everybody's pocket, but it's the winner, the winner's pocket.
You do have to win.
Yeah. So I think that's a little significant in the, in the impact of the community that, you know, people can spend money.
Thank you for sharing that little bit. You didn't have to do that. Would you have an opposition that as part of the CUP, we would just say the, the main event would be finished at eleven o'clock as opposed to allowing it to go to twelve as the neighbor has in their ordinance? And yes, there can be extenuating circumstances, but advertise it as being done at eleven, which may give some mitigation to the impacted homeowner?
Yeah, I think we'd be agreeable to that, yes.
Awesome, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
I'd, I'd like to make one comment. Going back to the lighting, I, I'd like to note that the photometric study that was performed shows that fifty foot from the arena on the south side, you have zero foot candles.
Correct.
So that's that's well within your property.
Yes.
So the glare that we're seeing on the left side of the screen is no longer there for the neighbor.
Yeah, they.
I mean, she might complain about seeing the lights, but they're on your property and you've angled them down appropriately.
Right, thank you, yes.
That, that's just a comment.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Okay, thank you guys. And ladies.
I'm going to close the public portion of the here, of this meeting. And I believe we have sufficient information and participation by the public to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. I move to approve conditional use permit CUP two zero two four dash zero five as presented, subject to the staff report and information provided during this hearing and the conditions of approval in attachment A.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so now we can have a bit of discussion. I would like to see, um, an additional requirement added to this to have the official closing of the events to be stated as eleven o'clock. We all know that things can go upside down, people get hurt, horses run off and things can run long, but as a general rule, I think it's totally within the neighbor's lifestyle to have a knowledge that the events will be over at eleven o'clock. I learned a new word last week called, um, quiet enjoyment of your property, which isn't exactly like a lot of fancy legal terms, exactly what it sounds like. Quiet enjoyment, and I'm going to give you the rough description is each person has a right to enjoy and use their property within the law. And that means both ways. And so it's unfortunate that we're in this position, but I think the point's been proven that there's been a lot of effort to work this out. And so now it's our turn to make some recommendations. So does anybody else have any issue with the requirement?
Are we going to run into a legal issue with it conflicting with triple three has then?
It's a conditional use permit and we can pretty much within reason decide to do something like that without any cause.
I personally don't think it's fair. I think if we're going to be fair, we're going to be fair across the board with everybody. That's just my personal opinion.
Okay, anybody else?
Um, my concern I have with the neighbor, if it was me, yeah, I, I would not want the light, the noise, but at the same time, there's got to be a way to, to make it where it's going to be acceptable for both parties. What he's doing is great. I love what you're doing. It's awesome. I think it's great. Um, I guess I do feel for the neighbor too in that, in that respect, but I think, okay, I have as an honored guest one night maybe or something, you know, something different, you know, get together, make amends. But what you're doing, I think is great. I just, I just feel that that needs to be addressed as well. I mean, it can, it can be done. I feel like it can be done and not have this conflict. What exactly that would be, don't know yet, but I think it can be worked out.
I could tell you, I live just outside the thousand foot radius of where this is at. I've seen the lights. I've heard the PA. It's no different than every Friday night during football season at the high school, during baseball season right now at the high school, during track and field at the high school. I can tell you who comes in first all the time when they're running track. It's, it's part of being here. And as someone who was a big part of the youth in this community when I, up to, up until my retirement, this is something that is needed for the community. And I think this is something that is great for the community. I understand where Miss Hennessy is coming from. However, there is growth in communities. And unfortunately, that's what we're dealing with here. And it is unfortunately just one person at this time. And, and I get with what you're saying and I get with what she's saying. But like I said, those basketball court lights shine right into my backyard when I'm outside out chewing a cigar in the evening there at the high school. So it's, it's part of living in a community.
Okay, so when we have, uh, a proposal and then not everybody's in agreement, we usually go down and poll each commission member, their stance on the proposal, meaning the closing at eleven o'clock. And unless everybody's in disagreement here, I think we should do that. Commissioner Metters.
I'll agree with the eleven o'clock.
Yes.
Commissioner Zamudio?
I agree with eleven.
Mr. Welker? Sir?
No, I do not.
Vice Chair?
I agree with eleven o'clock and I will also note that the applicant agreed with it.
Okay, so based on our well, I proposed it, so I obviously agree with it. I don't think it's egregious for the same reason that Vice Chair brought it up, that the owner didn't seem to have a huge amount of heartburn. And if it was next to my house, and I understand what you're saying, but the high school was there when you moved there. And this wasn't there when the property was, when the, when the, when the property was a house built on that property, Olson's Green was part of that property and this came later. And so it's a little bit of a different circumstance. I mean, I live very close to the community center. I get it. Lights glare, that's just part of being here and part of doing business. And I don't disagree with what you're saying, but in respect to the impacted home, homeowner, I don't think that's a giant concession that we're giving up there.
Mr. Chairman, you, um, had talked about having a condition that we obtained written permission from the police chief about the sound.
So it's possible we may do that, but I'm going to let the commissioner that had the concern
Okay.
give us some advice.
It just wasn't, it wasn't mentioned, so I just didn't want you guys to forget it.
I appreciate that, thank you. So do you have that much of a concern about it? Because we could do that.
After hearing the other piece of that where Josh did say it, didn't have any conditions, it's okay with me. I think we don't need it.
It would certainly eliminate a step. And it doesn't seem to be a huge concern that he's not going to be okay with it.
I can tell you that is.
Put it in writing anyways.
That is verily poorly written town ordinance that for the last ten years has been a thorn in the side of the police department trying to enforce, which literally means if my neighbor across the street who plays his nineteen sixties rock and roll as he washes his car is more than fifty feet, I could call the police and file a complaint. That's as ridiculous as it gets.
And, and you could complain about every car going down eighty nine?
Fire engines, ambulance.
So I'm going to call for a vote and then we can have a little more discussion about some of these things. So I'm going to call for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Welker?
Yes.
Commissioner Pizzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Dida?
Yes.
Commissioner Zamudio?
Yes.
Commissioner Metters?
Yes.
Commissioner Pasiak?
Yes.
Chair Merritt?
Yes. So the motion was passed unanimously. Okay, so before you folks leave, don't bail out. I'm going to rearrange the, um, addenda this a tiny bit and take my turn to speak while I have an audience that's very much somebody I'd like to talk to. At some point, we are going to be required by the city council to come back and address poop running into the neighbor's yard horse ordinance. The last time we did that, it was one ranger and one riot in here. And I don't want to go down that road again, and so I'm asking all you good horse people to please speak to town staff or anybody on this commission to please speak to town staff or anybody on this commission with good ideas to mitigate issues. That is two things that has to be able to be quantitative. In other words, we have to have something that says it's not doing what it's supposed to do, and it needs to be fair to everybody concerned. And no, we're not trying to get rid of horses or tell you you can't have but one and a half sheep in the backyard. But we are going to be asked to address this again. Please think about it, we would love information and ideas because there are going to be people that make rules that maybe aren't horse people, that may deliver something that you'll all hate. And I would, I really don't want that to happen. We've tried many times and I've announced in lots of zoning meetings that it's coming. The only way it won't come is if town council tells us to not do it, because we're, work for them, they've commissioned us to do it. We have to proceed with it at some point. So I'm just giving you a fair warning that you got a great opportunity to have your say and get things the way you want. And I'm sorry ma'am, but you'll be given an opportunity to speak in just a minute. Okay, so we're going to move to item E, action items, election of officers. So are we doing that tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you folks for coming. We'll take a brief recess till the room empties. Thank you folks for being calm.
She wants it in the record?
I'm still hungry.
I'm gonna, I'm going to, will you elect the commissioner, the chair of the commission first? And so as part of the way the rules work, I'm gonna hand the meeting over to the vice chair to maintain propriety.
I'll take a nomination for chairman of the commission.
I nominate Chuck Merritt.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was even faster than the last time. And thank you, I'm honored to be able to do it. And I just really appreciate, we've had a really good commission for a long time and that's, makes it easy to do the job. Okay, so we're going to move forward to nominate a vice chair, for a person for that position. So do I have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate for vice chair, Gary Pasiak.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Anybody else wanna offer anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, chief, did we get it done? Thank you. And again, it's an honor to serve and, and it's, it's been a very interesting time. Okay, so I kinda short shifted the public out of here and they missed their opportunity to speak about other things. You don't count. So do, does the staff have anything they wanna let us know about?
Um, so for prior actions, we did have a text amendment go that went before you for the state statute mandate on timeframes for residential rezonings. Um, just a quick summary, we exceed the current state record, or state requirement of a hundred and?
Hundred and eighty days is the, is the limit, and we complete our process in eighty-four days.
Which is under the limit, so we were good to go anyways.
We were good to go anyway. Um, but based on legal opinion, it is best to have that, um, adoption on code for conformance with state regulations. Anyway, that went to town council last Tuesday? And it was approved unanimously.
Also, the happy solar ordinance will be heard on Saint Patrick's Day at Grace Church, starting at five-thirty with town council.
Wow.
Which building?
Green Bear.
That'll liven it up. So this is an opportunity for anybody on the commission to speak about anything they would like to speak about. Does anybody have anything they wanna expound on? All right, um, then it's supposed to be my time, but I just wanna welcome the new, um, commission member who was absent from the last meeting. And we appreciate your volunteering and tonight was a little more than typical, but sometimes it comes up that way. And I really appreciate all the questions everybody asked. Participation is really important. Okay, and the call to the public? Anybody like to step up? We're done, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
What's that?
I'll second.
All right, councilman, have at it.
I'll second that.
So, um, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. You all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much, and town staff, awesome job.